...of your profession, your position in serving this community with discretion for over 15 years. Your service to Sebring is generally appreciated. Congratulations on this commendation for a job well done.
Thank you.
We have some other ones that we're going to take out of the council meeting at 7:00. Fire fighters, may be excused if you have a training session. Thank you. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we bow before you to offer praises unto you. We thank you, Lord, for the day that you have given us and for the privilege to assemble here in peaceful tranquility to do the business of the city. We ask every voice heard and every vote cast pleasing unto you. We ask a special prayer, Lord, for our sick and our shenan and our community. You would lay your healing hand upon them, comfort them in their time of need. In such faith I pray in Jesus' holy precious name. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please receive it. Court call roll.
Phillips, Wright.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Flowers, Avery.
Here.
Yes.
Council, Mrs. Phillips is at home ill this evening. She called this afternoon. And Mr. Flowers is at work this evening. A motion to excuse them would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hart, second, and by Wright to excuse Phillips and Flowers. Questions or comments? Attorney in the court, call the roll.
Wright.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Motion carries. Phillips and Wright are excused. Leading disposition in this of the previous meetings. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, make a motion to accept the minutes as presented from the meeting of May 29, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Hart, seconded by Avery to accept the minutes as presented. Any questions or comments? Attorney in the court, call the roll.
Wright.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Avery.
Yes.
Carries minutes are approved as delivered. Before we get into citizens' comments, we do have a few ceremonial duties to perform. I think we could do those right now. We appreciate the attendance tonight. A lot of people. I'm sure some of you would rather be in front of the TV. Stand up, please. Chief Harris, recognition for your service and dedication at Sebring Police Department, Village Sebring and its residents. You are hereby awarded a Ready Combination Medal. You have been commended for your efforts, professionalism and hard work while carrying out your duties. Your position in serving this community with distinction for over 15 years. Your service to Sebring is greatly appreciated. Congratulations on your combination of ready combination medal. Job well done.
Thank you.
Get that ground in your face. Joe Richards. Recognition of your service and dedication at Sebring Police Department, Village Sebring and its residents. You are hereby awarded a Ready Combination Medal. You are commended for your efforts, professionalism and hard work while carrying out your duties. Of your position in serving this community with distinction for over 15 years. Your service to Sebring is greatly appreciated. Congratulations on your commendation and job well done. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Last but not least. Mr. Clem.
Everybody messes up.
The crook, every time we say each other. Okay, Officer Kent. Okay. You have been selected for the Sebring Police Officer of the Year. Congratulations. For your dedicated service and commitment to the Village Sebring and its residents, you are to be commended. Recognition of being selected as Police Officer of the Year for 2018, you are hereby eligible to be awarded Triumph Medal. Therefore, these know that you have met all criteria for the Officer of the Year award. Dedication. The individual has demonstrated the highest degree of dedication and participation in activities within the police department, including emergency response, public education and special programs. Loyalty. The individual has demonstrated an alliance to the police department and fellow officers. This individual supports others' efforts to achieve goals of police service, support department facilities and activities aimed at improvements in the department or the community. Productivity. The individual has gone beyond normal duties of a position of visible improvement and enhanced the department's operations and better served the community. Professionalism. The individual abhorrence his duties in a manner that amplifies the competency that reflects the highest standards of police service and regularly demonstrates the ability to lead or follow based on existing circumstances. Your service at Sebring Police Department and municipality of Sebring is generally appreciated. You are commended for a job well done. Congratulations. By the way, folks, we have a business meeting. And if any of you would feel like to leave your certain office with yourself, if you'd like to stay, you're still a woman to do that, too.
Okay, carrying on with our agenda. Citizens' comments. Any citizen wish to address counsel tonight?
Reading communications and petitions. Any petitions to be presented to counsel this evening? Under communications. Court, do you have anything? Management, do you have any communications?
Yes, sir, just one item. If counsel will go to the final page in the report, I received this notice from the Ohio Municipal League today. Apparently, there is a bill to strip local government funding support from municipalities and preempt local water delivery practices that are up for a committee vote tomorrow with the State House. The league wanted to alert municipalities regarding the HB 602. It's legislation proposed by Republican Mike Duffy of Worthington. Would preempt municipalities from setting water rates for political subdivisions to which they have extended water and sewer services is up for opponent testimony and possible vote tomorrow morning. So the league is encouraging any elected officials to contact the representatives if you have an issue with this. It's essentially an encouragement upon local home rule on setting our water rates based on what counsel feels rather than the State House bill. So I did want to alert you to that fact. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
My comment to that would be I will call our representative, Mr. Bochery, this evening after the meeting and encourage him to just have the governor rip up the Constitution and he can run everything for Paul on this like he wants to. We have a notice from the Emergency Management Agency. Dennis O'Hara is the director and the county commissioners. And it's time for the Honing County Hazard Mitigation Plan Update Jurisdictional Meeting. This happens every five years. Last one was in 2013. And I have asked the police chief to represent this community to sit on this. And the meeting will be scheduled on Wednesday, June 27, at East Kate Regional Council meetings. He has accepted that challenge. And that's all I have on communications. Committee reports. Finance.
Yes, Mayor, members of council. The finance committee has not met since May 21, 2018. Therefore, a motion authorizing the village manager to pay bills when funds become available for checks dated from 5/26/2018 through 6/8/2018 in the amount of $341,237.01. And also for checks dated 6/9/2018 through 6/22/2018 in the amount of $99,768.70 for a combined total of $441,571.01 is authorized to be paid.
Second.
Motion by Hart, seconded by Wright to pay the bills when funds become available. Any questions or comments?
Mayor, under questions or comments, I went through the bills, and some of the both pay periods are from the same vendor, and they are as follows. $171,587.74 to the Ohio Water Development Authority. And I broke it down to where the payments are. To the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus loan, excuse me, of $76,435.40. To the UV loan payment, $25,423.60. Waterline Phase 1 loan payment, $6,598.29. And wastewater crypto loan payment was $14,658.35. And the wastewater treatment plant bypass loan, $38,114.56. And then there was a wastewater treatment plant engineering loan payment of $10,358.80. Also, they had a payment of $54,564.53 to Treasurer, State of Ohio, for carbon filtration loan payment. And $23,249.39 to Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for health insurance. $20,146.75 to Trumbull Industries for water maintenance bill to the Service Department. $30,69.60 to Pipelines Incorporated for water line repair bill to the Service Department. $16,840.75 to Westfield Insurance for commercial policy dated 5/1/2018 through 5/1/2019. $12,286.66 to Software Solutions. $8,975.25 to Wells Fargo Home Mortgage for vacant property bond release. $12,698.19 to Ohio Edison for electricity payment. $11,213.36 to Ohio Public Employees' Retirement. That's a matching pension. And $9,900 to WSOS Community Action Commission for a crypto project. And that is the outstanding bills for both those pay periods, Mayor. And that would be all I have.
Any other questions or comments? Attorney in the court, call the roll.
Wright.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Anything else under finance, Mr. Hart?
I would like to set a meeting if that's appropriate at this time. If the members are available the week of July 16. Doesn't have to be the 16th specific, but that week. If you're, I know Dave said he would be available on the 16th. Marvin, if you're open. Okay. I have Monday open, but I can go any day of the week if Dave's okay with, or it doesn't matter. If you're not open on Monday, maybe Dave and I, well, I can move.
What time? 5?
5 is fine.
Let's do Monday at 5.
Monday at 5, on the 16th. Finance.
I'll make certain it works.
Okay.
That should be good.
This is to go over mid-year review of where we're at after six months. And I don't believe we're going to look at the aggregation on the trash as of yet because the manager has some other things on his plate. He may not have that complete. But if he does, we'll look at that.
All right.
Just to go over any anticipated expenses that aren't on the table yet and see what we got.
All right, should be good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. But just later, Mr. Avery.
I'm new here.
Capital improvement was Ms. Phillips, Mr. Hart.
None, I love them.
Annex action, Mr. Kennel.
No meeting.
Service maintenance, Mr. Wright.
Yeah, Mayor. Service maintenance, this is our meeting on June 11 at 4:00 here in council chambers. Members in attendance were myself, Mr. Flowers, and Mr. Kennel, also Ms. Phillips, and Mr. Hart, yourself, Manager Giroux, Solicitor Tolson, and some various landlords. Items for discussion, the meeting was to review the pending legislation for registering rental properties within the village. After some discussion, it was determined that no new legislation is required as ordinance 32-2015 has a paragraph in it requiring that all landlords provide tenant information to the village. It was also discussed that we review the vacant property ordinance, which is 33-13, to make some changes for snowbirds and to exempt some other properties that are being maintained. So a request will be made to put this into our committee to update that. One other thing we had on the, was brought by Councilman Flowers, was an issue that Mr. Seidel had brought to him due to a flooding issue on Virginia between 19th and 20th Streets. The manager was to check with Mr. Seidel to see if this was a village issue or a homeowner issue. Meeting adjourned at 4:50.
Anything else?
So what I would do, Mayor, is I would request, if you do not mind, that we take a look at our ordinance 33-13 and maybe polish it up a little bit, add in there the information about snowbirds and some possibilities of exempting those vacant properties that are maintained to current standards. So we'll have to work with the solicitor on that.
Give me that ordinance number again.
It was 33-13. 33-13, yes. It was an amendment to our codified ordinance adopting Section 745.01. As a vacant property registry.
Okay, got it. Yes, you have that in committee, Mr. Hart.
Okay, so we'll take a look at that. Also, Mayor, the clerk has placed on my table, and I have received by email that First Energy Solutions has provided a renewal. So we would like to also take a look at that.
Yes, you already have that.
And I thought we already had that in our committee. So I will try to set up a meeting prior to our next council meeting.
Okay, since this is the one in the sixth month, I still have a note here about the void water contract. Is that taken care of?
We, no, we haven't. I haven't looked at that, no. So we will, I can add that onto the list, yes.
Anything else under service maintenance?
No, that's it, Mayor.
Okay. Safeties, Mr. Flowers in his absence. Mr. Hart, do you have any?
No, I do not.
Avery?
No.
Okay. All right. Managers' report, 7/19.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll definitely try to keep it short. It is a 12-page report, so I'm going to just hit the highlights. I do want to thank Mayor Pittferton for presiding over the awards. There was one other recipient I should like to mention. Fire Captain Barry Schroeder also received a 15-year service Ready Combination Medal, so I congratulate him and his family. Just quickly, we developed a phone issue with our main phone line in the city building. It also happens to be our emergency fire response phone line. Problem occurred during one of the recent thunderstorms, probably from a lightning strike, power surge. It was not the 911 line. We did get quite a bit of a runaround from AT&amp;T. Later, we found out apparently they were on strike. But Pam Dixon and the interim did shift the phone lines to accommodate emergencies until AT&amp;T made the repairs, and they did several days later. So that was resolved. One other thing we're going to do is prioritize that line. We're already making arrangements for that. Roger Smith from Land Bank contacted us, telling us, this is earlier on the South 10th property, that EPA was holding up the demolition progress at the bus station. We sorted that up, sorted that out, or helped them sort that out. The approval was given by EPA, and of course, everybody knows that the structure was demolished on June 4. We contacted the OBWC, and I know this has been an issue that's been in several reports in the last couple months, but there was some amendments needed to be made that I need to mention. OBWC did approve the ambulance power cot grant, or they got a preliminary approval. However, after talking to Brenda Smith, who is our inspector, she indicated that they would not make the award unless we also added the power loader and the installation costs with the power cot. She said if we did that, then they would be more than happy to approve it. So I made the amendments and redid the new budget with the new quotes. And the village estimated additional cost would be about $5,500, but we would yield an additional $20,000 in grant money. So I want to let council know when that funding arrives. I think it's still a great deal. So just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. Chief Harris did order the U4 Taurus. That was in early June. We anticipate a delivery date of mid-November. Bold Chief and I would like to thank council for the approval on this. I met with new business coming downtown. It's called the Lowbrow Tattoo Shop. It will be located at 347 North 15th Street. Their proposed business is a permitted use and acceptable in the established commercially zoned area at that address. So they did meet all the criteria. I contacted Julian and Groo to prepare the amendments to refile the 2016, 2017 financial statements on the Hinkle system. The Hinkle system just came out in 2017, so we're still trying to figure out how exactly that works. One of the reasons we contracted Julian and Groo to do with that is if they needed to amend what was submitted to make it acceptable to the Auditor of State. And then once we have that template, it should be easy to do with that from that point on. So they also anticipate the beginning of the 2016, 2017 audits sometime in July. I'm hearing probably around July 2, maybe. But they wanted to say that they've been preempted by other commitments. So village received cable franchise funds in the amount of $14,231.23. Sorry, it says today. That was not today. Those were deposited in the general fund. Part-time patrolman Domenico Marchianda has been appointed as a full-time patrolman. That was effective June 10. He was a probationary officer with the department since May 18, and he was selected from the civil service list and fills the vacancy created by the resignation of Officer Saranovic. Two pieces of equipment that the service department needs, and I know this was discussed in finance committee on a few occasions, I'm certainly happy to discuss in finance committee in July if you would like to discuss it further. But I believe they are worth considering purchasing. One, of course, is the asphalt box. That will handle about five cubic yards or about six tons of asphalt. There's a lot of pros for that, primarily because we can get it to site without a coiling, and there isn't any waste. Approximate cost would be about $31,000 for that. Also, I think the priority piece of equipment would be the new backhoe. Bill Sainer, our director, indicated he'd like to opt for John Deere or 10L. That is out of the cooperative purchasing. Our original estimates were about $150,000, but this is $80,000 of all the attachments he needs. So I think it's very affordable if we move forward, if we use a five-year plan. And we're only looking at about $16,000 per year for payments. So I think we can handle that. But I certainly will leave that up to the finance committee. And then if so, we can work out some sort of financing. Malia tracked down contractors to repair and replace the falling brick wall to the basement at the rear of City Hall. She worked on it for six weeks, contacted at least six contractors. And the only one that responded was DK Masonary. It was for a quote of $8,300. Since we did due diligence on that, on a quote, I said, let's go ahead and go forward with that. They agreed to do the job, and based on their workload, they're anticipating they get to that early September unless we're lucky and they can do it earlier. So that has been addressed, and we've cordoned off until it's repaired for safety reasons. WSOS had the opportunity to apply or reapply for the USDA funding to continue the work on behalf of the Small Business Association, the small businesses in Sebring. The application was due earlier. They needed me to go ahead and redo the app and resubmit it. I am pleased to announce that WSOS will be getting that funding, and that will continue the program that's been very successful and very good with the local businesses. They're very pleased with it for an additional two years, and it's no cost to the village. Speaking of the WSOS, I know in Mr. Hart's report, there was a bill for $9,900 bucks. That is for the asset management plan. Originally, the crypto-sparidium project, the original amounts for that was for the GIS system, which was completed. There was some leftover money in the crypto project, so I asked WSOS if that money can be shifted over, and they said yes. So that bill will not be out of pocket. We will get reimbursement for that. Sue Sainer and I did the site inspection at the Shrek and Gossip Park and identified the trees that we feel that should have been removed to prevent unwanted vandalism, et cetera, at the restroom area. We decided to remove eight small trees, but continued to leave the nice decorative evergreen backdrop. I marked the trees, and then Bill removed those trees last week. And we hope that that will open it up enough to prevent the vandalism but still remain have a park aesthetic intact. So I wanted to report that we did get that done. Due to the heavy workload of the service crew, I solicited multiple quotes to spruce up the landscaping around City Hall. We're going to do new red mulch, some edging and bush trimming, which desperately needs done, in my opinion. Looks a little shabby, and this building does represent the public of Sebring. The lowest quote of the three quotes was the local business turfed the trees for $795, and they said they could get to it this week. Chief Harris and I attended a meeting at the high school with Superintendent Viscon a few weeks ago to go over some new security measures equipped for the school system, which they will be implementing in August for the new school year. We also discussed options for reinstituting a new school resource officer and perhaps a new DARE program as well. I will report to council the details of the SRO DARE program when Chief Harris completes program draft. We are anticipating a contractual arrangement of the school system in which they cover the associated costs of the program.
You may have noticed that Central Allied did, in fact, complete the paving of California Avenue. I think it came out quite nice. We also repaved two sections of Kentucky Avenue per council's earlier request. The additional paving was done by Central Allied also, but it was separate from the California Avenue project. We worked with the engineers and Bill Sainer, and we got the quotes to pave that. The cost for the additional work was $23,769. There is legislation before you tonight to approve that. That was over my spending limit, but under the bid requirement. So, and by the way, Kentucky Avenue also came out quite nice.
I've been working this week on finishing drafting of the 2018 D6 grant application for the next cycle for West Virginia paving project. This project will be from 13th Street to 19th Street. Project cost will be approximately $280,000. We should anticipate a grant award of about $157,000, and the local match would be about $128,000. So that will also free up money next cycle. We may want to do additional streets like we did this year as well. So I will definitely work with finance committee on which ones you want done, depending on how much money we have allocated for the budget. Local business owners were discussing the small business visitation program from the April SBA meeting. I volunteered to partner with them on this. The visiting businesses The visiting businesses is a priority of Jennifer Ling. She's a local bank manager at the Huntington Bank, so she can help business owners with their needs. I would like to do that, so it gives me a wonderful opportunity to go to all the businesses and meet one-on-one. There's lengthy information in your report regarding the benefits of that program, and I provided a master list for all the local businesses to Miss Ling, and then we are going to work out a schedule. I will hope to start doing that next week. Chief Harris reports that Sergeant Everling attended first-time supervisor class in Richfield at the OPADA. OPADA is the Ohio Peace Officers Training Academy. He's the first sergeant to see me attend this in the last ten years, and from now on, it will be a standard practice for all supervisors. Also, dispatcher Pam Dixon attended the LEEDs class on June eighth and received all the new updates and requirements for the LEEDs system. This was also in Richfield. I also inquired on the status of the dispatcher EMD training, which is the Emergency Medical Dispatch Training Program, and was advised that the details are still very reviewed by Mahoney County nine-one-one. Pam said she would keep me informed, and I do have additional information on that further in the report. We checked on the delivery status of the new utility van. It's scheduled to be built on August first in Kansas City, and it should be here the last week of August, so looks like we'll get it at the end of the summer. Several council members expressed interest on the progress in the timeline of the Fire Department staffing program status and first quarter assessment. As you may remember, the consensus of council is to allow the program to operate for thirty days. Excuse me, it should be ninety days. And then allow for ten working days for staff to review the financial data and make a report for council. After discussing the ninety-day timeline with Chief Anderson, he advised the first official day of program was March twenty-sixth, in order to start the tracking first week of April. The chief also reminds us that the revenue report is about a month behind the expense status due to the lag time involved in billing and insurance company's review process. Therefore, in order to have the correct revenue and expense data to compare, he needed the revenue data won't be available till late July, even though the program would end end of June. Chief and I can provide the labor costs at the end of June, which we are going to work on, but you'll still need the revenue numbers as well. So as soon as that information comes, we'll have a collated report, and you will get that data, so you can make a decision. I also forwarded the request by Chief Anderson to council. Apparently, he also emailed you, but I want to make sure you get it in case you didn't get your email. He's basically requesting a consideration of restructuring for, adjusting for officer positions, and the rest of the information you can look at regarding what he wants and why, so I would certainly refer that to a committee or request that be referred to a committee. Director Sainer and I were advised by Chris Maslow, EPA. They say they're concerned about corrective action needs to be taken in response to the engineer's findings regarding the failing interior coatings and significant interior corrosion of the Texas Avenue storage units, and for the increased inspection frequency of the concrete reservoir. Bill and I had already requested a comprehensive tank status report from MDA engineers. That was back in two thousand fifteen. You're moving, but you'd get a copy if you like. We also discussed implementing that project in two thousand seventeen, including having the tank inspected with quotes. Well, we do have that information. Council was advised in my weekly report at that time of that. As you may remember, the ballpark cost for this project was between three hundred and five hundred thousand dollars. It's not mandated, it was not mandated work at that time, so we held off in order to fund and do all the EPA mandated work, which is, of course, recently being completed, so now we have to go back and address that. So now they're mandating this work. They're looking at some sort of thirty-day timeline. We've already made requests for extensions because, based on the amount of money, there's no way it could be done in thirty days because you have to go through the bidding process, and we still have to allocate how exactly we're going to fund that. So I've got my fingers out on OWDA and some other funding mechanisms to see what can be done. It can be done with a hundred and twenty days, two hundred and fifty day range, but it's going to require additional loan, unless I can find a grant. I'm not hopeful on that, but I will try to absorb the cost this fiscal year. So as soon as we get the details from EPA, which we have not yet, we can figure out what exactly we need to do, when and how much. So as soon as I have all that information, I'll certainly report that to council. Speaking of EPA, just briefly, they want us to relocate the water plant ortho-phosphate injection point from the current location they approved earlier to a new location. There is a breakdown of about seven items with sub-items for your review. Our engineers proposed to relocate the ortho-feed directly downstream, the chlorine feed, and so we are working on that as well. So, I mean, they approved it, and then they decided they don't want to do it, so now we're doing it again. I was advised by the police department that businesses, real estate agencies, and others have placed signs in the public right-of-way. That was the tree lawn and sidewalk. Having been given notices reminding everyone of Village Ordinance five oh three point oh two prohibits such. I contacted the merchants through SBA and explained the purpose of this long-established ordinance is to keep the right-of-way free of traffic view obstructions, to prevent obstruction of pedestrian use on the sidewalks, and to prevent signage clutter in the village. However, I also understand the need to advertise our business for passing customers. Therefore, under the ordinance, which grants, gives me the authority, I allowed them to put sidewalk placards on public sidewalks in the downtown business district, as long as the placement of the placard does not impede pedestrian traffic or obstruct the view of motorway traffic. So it allowed the merchants to continue doing that, but it also keeps the spirit of the ordinance intact. Further, I asked Chief Harris to use the code enforcement process as applicable within the regulations to try to clean up the commercial industrial parties, excuse me, properties. It may not address the structural issues, but we believe we can help clean up the junk and debris on the property itself. The business property condition on Maryland Avenue was not the only concern, and those have gone out, Chief, in waves. So they are being notified en masse. I also asked the SBA if they might help the village clean up in this cleanup process, if they were so inclined by contacting anybody they knew, friends or so forth, or associates, to ask them to help keep their community clean and tidy, and, you know, the village to not put those properties in non-compliant condition. It's ultimately the property under your responsibility. So I asked the SBA if they would be kind enough to help us out on that. I met with Mr. Chuck Alcorn this week, sorry, last week, about the concerns of the new Rita tax process, muted his tax return, and passed on his questions to Rita for a response. Also, after reviewing the taxes with him on his perceived refund credit versus the actual tax bill, Mr. Alcorn and I concluded that the Rita numbers and the tax bill appear to be correct. So he seemed to be, Mr. Alcorn seemed to be satisfied with that, and I will follow up with him on the answers I received from Rita regarding his questions. All of Mr. Wright, I believe you have some too, and I'm more than happy to go through the process.
Mine's handled.
Okay.
Probably give me my money back.
Okay. So I do want to say that Mr. Alcorn seems to be satisfied, and if he has any questions or concerns, I'm more than happy to help.
Note to self, don't overpay, because they will hold your money for up to ninety days.
This is also a follow-up on the nine-one-one support and compliance program. Chief Harris and Pam Dixon met with Maggie McGee, who of course is the Mahoney County nine-one-one coordinator. Chief advised that we aren't compliant with everything except the EMD. This is no fault of our own, because the county has still not made a decision as to which EMD program the county will be going with. Canfield PD is now our backup overflow PSAP. This was changed from Austintown. The county made its change to, of a network to ASC, ASE for nine-one-one. This was done on June fourteenth without any problems. Two of our officers attended advanced building clearance last week as well, so I think that will be really great for businesses. So as soon as they let us know when the EMD training is available, and it is, of course, at no cost to us, the county is picking that up too, if you want to mention that. Copy of Officer Brindeck, who's our code enforcement officer, his updated vacant house list was forwarded to all council members earlier. He will continue to update and adjust if this list is needed. The list was also forwarded to Mabel Munkifer, who is handling the correspondence to get out the appropriate vacant house notices en masse, so that's in progress as well.
You know when he did that, because I have not seen that come through.
That was attached. It was either put in your box, or it was attached to the weekly report.
This pass one?
If you don't have a copy, I'll make sure you get one.
It may be in my box after the package together. I just didn't recall seeing it.
If you don't have a copy of it, I'll make sure you get it.
I'll check in my box before leaving. Thank you.
Let's see. I must get number twenty-seven, since the chief volunteered for that on the twenty-seven. I've also been working on the final draft of the trash aggregation specifications, based on the committee's recommendations, which will be available for council review by now. I don't think it's going to be at the end of the month, mostly because I've got preempted by the asset management plan deadline, but it's next in the hopper as soon as that. WSOS is doing the asset management plan formal report. However, we have to correlate a lot of policy and documentation to supplement that, so that's going to take a lot of time, because there's like fifty of them. So as soon as that gets done, and the trash aggregation specs are next on my list, and I will get that done as soon as possible, if it's possible prior to the finance committee, I will do my best. Let's see. Once that's done, and the trash aggregation specs are done, and council gives the okay, and we work on the bidding process, I would recommend to council that we consider a public education program for July and August. More than happy to work with the committee on that to see how you want to proceed. I do have some ideas and some recommendations. The auditor of the state approved our IPA contract modification agreement to extend beyond the IPA July two date. That's going back to the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen audit. This was, request was made by Julian Groob because of their other commitments. Superintendent Hatton provided some update information about the wastewater plant, and I will let you go ahead through those. Essentially, they're looking for a new compressor for the number-two bioreactor blowers and the inflow pump that needs to be rebuilt, and then some other minor items. So their report is in there if you'd like to see that. I did throw in some info that recently was forwarded to me by the ICMA, which is the International City County Management Association. It's regarding brownfields utilization, investment, and local development. It's called Build Act. This was enacted in March twenty-third of two thousand eighteen as part of the, excuse me, Consolidated Appropriations Act of two thousand eighteen. Short version is EPA is looking for a new mechanism in order to fund brownfields. They're going to be apparently putting quite a bit of money in it. Couple items that stood out, as I read in the information, is part of the process, the EPA is going to fine-tune three provisions, and I think the one that we need to look at really hard is the new community assistance grant authority. So they're talking about increased per-site cleanup grant amounts to increase them by half a million, and I think once that program is out, I think that might be something we should look at very hard, especially for the rural China property. So I'm really anxious to see how that's going to pan out. As you may know, the two thousand eighteen Consumer Confidence Reports for the water plant were all sent out to all customers last week, and it's also pro-EPA regulations in two weeks in advance of the deadline, and we also have it up on the water site. All water quality indicators results are optimum for the system, so things look very good and continue to keep it that way. Mr. Mayor, sorry, it was lengthy report. That concludes my report.
Any questions for manager? Mr. Wright?
I don't really have a question, but I do have a comment. So Rick, when we reviewed thirty-two dash two zero one five, there is a statement in there. It's section twenty-three, and it talks about rental and lease property, and that they're supposed to notify the tax administrator in the village of the residence name, phone number, and all that type of information. I don't think all of our landlords know that, and the only reason I say that is because one in specific mentioned at that meeting that he never knew that was. So I don't know if we can put something together that we can send this particular section out to our known landlords to say, you know, you are required by this ordinance to notify us.
No problem.
I think Rita also will probably capture some of these, just for the sheer fact that they're going to reach out a lot further than Mabel could reach out, but I think we should, we owe ourselves a due diligence, at least to say, hey, we notified the landlords within the community that they need to adhere to this policy.
I think it's not a problem at all. More than happy to set that up. Which ordinance was that, sir?
It was thirty-two dash two zero one five, and it was to add chapter one seventy-two to the codified ordinances of the village of Sebring regarding municipal income tax, sponsored by then-council member Weingard.
Okay.
I think it was mostly House Bill. I think it was some House Bill five was mixed in there, some changes they were trying to implement, so.
We'll set it up, and I'll notify you. Council, it's complete.
I have a question for the manager also.
Yes, sir.
Regarding the paving.
Yes.
That we're borrowing out of the general fund. Are paving is done?
Well, I mean, council can tell me whether you're done or not, depending on how much money we have, but I would say that pretty much concludes our paving program, unless council or committee and council decide otherwise. I think it's a prudent measure to maybe curtail it, primarily because we had these new unanticipated expenses that are going to be for the water tank, which are now pressing us, and that's going to have to come out of the general fund primarily, because the water fund will not be able to take the stress. I could run the numbers and maybe provide something for you in July, if you want to see if there's a possibility for extra money for a fall pave.
Well, it wouldn't hurt to look, but, you know, with what Bill had, Bill's going. What he proposed, you know, oh, okay, I'm sorry, didn't see him. You know, proposing village streets that he could basically skirt.
Oh, the, yeah, no, we can probably, we can proceed with it. Bill?
I'm not saying he may not even get to them. I don't know.
No, but I know he's, you're still working on a water line, and you're working on Oregon?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So I know he's working on Oregon right now. It would be contingent upon his time, but I think fiscally, we can handle the veneer coats until we get proper paves on them at a later date, yes. That's contingent upon, I mean, only Bill can tell me how much he can handle, because I know he's got everything in there after the sun going now.
I don't want anybody's stretchers to be too thin, based on that.
Do you want me to do some research and report to committee?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I also had a question on the siren for the Fire Department. Is that still being worked on, or are we not going to turn that on?
Last time I talked to the chief, fire chief, he said he was working on it and looking into it. I could touch base with him and have something either by email to council tomorrow, or something in the weekly report.
And then our other issue is downtown with the Turner and May Building.
Yeah.
Ran into a fiasco with that SBA meeting.
Well, the Turner and May Building, it's just, that's a tough one to answer. I mean, because we don't really have a vehicle to deal with that. I think I did make our proposal, I'll have to pull my nose coming in, I remember I worked on it, and that we had some progress, and that I made a pitch to somebody that might be interested in purchasing it for a dollar and then proceed with the demolition. And I think it was one of my weekly reports I outlined that. I can pull that and go back over that, but I can't remember the details offhand right now.
The Land Bank's not done, Mayor, with all their homes.
Thank you. No, no, okay, that, that, okay.
Land Bank cannot do Turner and May Building.
Yeah, I know that they can't do it, but they're not done tearing down. Their company that they've hired is still in town, or will be in town, tearing, still continuing to tear.
I think there's eight more. I think there's eight more to go.
I think, yeah, there are at least five that I know of, but they're not through the foreclosure process yet.
Yeah, there are, I think, five in the hopper to get done, and then they are actually trying to go through the foreclosure process in order to acquire another three, possibly another four after that. And I do remember the details now, now that you mentioned the Land Bank. It was Land Bank that we made the pitch to. The problem, and the reason why the old bus station on South Tenth got done is because it had a living quarters above, which put it into a residential scenario, and under the rules, they could get away with that. I tried to make the same attempt, and they did report to council on that with Land Bank passing on the information, including the contact on who had purchased the property for a dollar. I did get a response, and I do remember sharing that with council. I think they said, the biggest problem is, is there living quarters upstairs and can be verified? And even if it's verified, their biggest concern is the cost of the demo, which is probably going to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, and what they really were concerned about is how much asbestos is in there, how hot is the building, and how much that's going to cost over and above the demo. So they were looking at that, but I haven't had anything back from Roger yet. I can ask, you know, tomorrow, but I think he was kind of chewing on that one still. But I appreciate that jog in memory.
In regards to what you had just said, you had spoke on whether there was a residential piece up above. Nobody knows.
I've been told that there was. In fact, somebody, I don't know if it was the mayor, mentioned that to me, that there used to be an old staircase going up to the side, two, two perhaps, living quarters up there. Mitch at El Sabore had mentioned that there may be living quarters. Mitch at El Sabore had mentioned that there may be living quarters up there as well. One of the things that we, can't go into the building, but one of the things that was discussed is how the fire chief looked in through the window, using the ladder or something, and see if there's anything in there.
Mitch has looked in there, and you did too, Bill, and there's a bathroom up there, but nobody specifically looked in there to see if there's a kitchen or anything like that.
Yeah, that's, that's-
There's no ingress or ingress to it, though.
There used to be an access.
Yeah, there was a side staircase from somebody told me.
Yeah.
At the time they did the bus station, there was no ingress or ingress to that.
There still was, he was upstairs and took pictures.
But that's the only two things.
I thought Turner May, Todd Shepherd and them were going to get the records out of that building, and use the shred out here.
All the information was given to them. I told them that you had no problem with them doing that, that you'd rather they did it before the public or after the public was done. They did not follow it up with anything.
Well, you know, we've been after Turner May building for a year, and all we get is promises. I think it's time we do, we do write some citations.
I think we do with all commercial buildings that we're having issues with, Mayor. I mean, it's going to cost us some, some legal fees, but you know what? I mean, nothing's happening, one way or the other.
We're being ignored, Mr. Wright.
Yes, absolutely. And I do have to say that I am very impressed with the land bank. I mean, they have really stepped it up this year, and I would definitely give them a huge pat on the back. They have taken down some very disastrous places with inside the village, and it is, we are starting to see that those lots come back around now, finally, after this long time. So, I would, if you would pass that on to them, I know I have been somewhat negative over the years that we don't tear enough down through them, but this year, they've stepped it up, and I appreciate all their efforts. They've spent some money here, and I'm sure that's been with some, you pounding on people's desks over there, or whatever you did, whatever you did, you made it happen. So, that's all I can say about that. But I truly believe, Mayor, we need to do something with these commercial buildings, because these people are laughing at us. Shutey's the same way. Cardinal said, oh, yeah, we're going to take care of that, and nothing's happened.
The building inspector told me that the strongest force we can deal with them is our fire chief. And the fire chief, and I talked about it, he said he's more than willing to meet with their inspectors and issue all the appropriate citations, because he can shut them down. I don't know that that's going to do a lot for Turner May, but Shutey and old bowling alley, if they get shut down, they might do something, but-
Their liquor license will come into jeopardy down here.
But the fire chief wanted to get through the festival, and then set up a time when he could take his two inspectors that are more experienced than he is, go down to the, whatever buildings are, need to be inspected, anything on that.
What does this council have to do?
Does this council have to do? I've been told by the building inspector, that the strongest, the person with the most power in this situation is our fire chief. And the fire chief knows that, he's talked about it too.
You got it, Rick?
Yeah.
Mr. Manager, that's your bailiwick.
We're on it.
Next council meeting, I think all of us expect a report on what's going to happen.
Understood, and you will have it. I do want to say that I did talk to the old bowling alley owner. She is on the clock, she has six days, or she will be cited. And then, I think Mr. Shutey is in the same boat. So, we are moving forward with citations now, and I will get together with the fire chief, and we're going to push buttons however we need to do, and whatever we can do within the regulations.
They do coordinate their inspectors coming over with Brian, I think Brian wants to bring-
The county inspectors?
Yeah. Wants to bring Brian Bailey and Brad in, who are more experienced at that than me.
Okay. Do you know what regulations the, the fire chief, do you know which regulations the fire chief can use as?
He knows, I talked to the chief about it.
He's got it, okay.
Yeah, he knows exactly what he's doing.
All right.
He just, he wanted to get through the festival, and he wanted to bring Brad and Brian in to assist.
All right, I will, I will have a chat with the fire chief ASAP, and I will report to council on exactly all forward motion on this.
I would talk to Jeff, when he called the building inspector, and I can get you, he's just our meeting boss. He, he's been really responsive to my calls. And he generally will call me back in a couple of hours, the next day if I'll need it, and-
He's the chief building inspector from the county.
Yervosa.
Yeah, Jeff.
Yervosa?
Yervosa.
What's, do you, do you know the end result on the top of your head? Can we legally force them to tear them down, put them in a position legally to do that?
I don't know, you have to ask the fire chief.
Okay.
Because I know that he can shut the buildings down.
Well, that would work for the bowling alley, but that's not going to do anything with Turner May. And we need, is there a mechanism to actually force a tear down?
Honestly, I think they're, I think they're just lazy. I think they don't want to go through the process of coming over here and meeting with the contractors to get the price to tear the place down. Because even the, I know when Sue Singer called me, she says, there are members of the community, in the business community, that would be willing to chip in financially, and he can, they can tear it down, and we can't tear it down for what they can. So-
Well, they're not subject to the asbestos law government.
Correct. Because they could do that, I just think, I, I mean, I talked to Bill about this at one point, just maybe have some of the contractors that are in town on our donations for land bank, give us some estimates on what it would cost to tear the place down.
Well, I know that-
They're not going to want to get in litigation on it.
No, I know that Roger was still chewing on the fat on the Turner May building. I think the two issues, the only two things that was holding him up to do something similar to the bus station was verifying that there was an apartment, and two, how much asbestos is in there. I think their cap, from what I'm getting from them, is about $24,005 per property.
Correct.
And based on that, I think they're going to exceed their limit with Turner May. If, if there's any asbestos in there, they might be able to do it for 24,500, with verification of a living quarters, though, maybe through the fire.
Kind of letting them off of it, but-
Well, it's getting down. Obviously, Turner May's not going to, you know, the owner's not going to do anything with it, but if land bank can put it in the hopper, based on that criteria, we might, we might get it down, you know, in a month.
You've got to understand, when the, when the land bank takes a building down, the land bank takes possession of the property.
I don't think they want it. I mean, I don't think Turner May wants it, they want to get rid of it.
Well, I think they-
I mean, and it would be council's decision to, you know, have some of our contractors, if they're in town, authorize them to give us some, some estimates.
What land bank is-
Well, we're going to want to watch getting in the middle of that.
I agree, I don't want to, don't want to get caught by the back door.
Yeah, I don't want to be getting in the middle of-
Well, I do, I know there was a lot of questions about-
Private building coming down, but-
I don't want, I don't want, I don't want Seaton to be accused of doing a backdoor on the asbestos by assisting a, you know.
Well, I also wanted to mention that I know that there was a question whether or not it was a shared wall or not, and Mitch apparently says it's a separate wall, so that's, that's promising, that's better than anything.
That's not a joint wall, there, that's not a problem with that property, but over the bowling alley, Shutey's showing people there's firewall there, that there's a load bearing wall, you know, between the bar and bowling alley, and there is not. And that's one of the things that the building inspector said, is it's, it's a completely separate entity. I said it is not a separate entity, and they've never gone inside.
Right. Last item I wanted to mention was what land bank is doing on properties that are torn down, because you're correct, they don't want the property. What they're doing is they're giving adjacent property owners first dibs to pick it up very cheap. So, whoever it would be, the neighbor to the Turner May, would have an opportunity to pick that up, blot it up for, plus nothing practical.
That would be mentioned.
Yeah, that would be mentioned.
You have a question?
Yeah. Just a little advice. The state fire marshal has inspectors, they have enforcers, you know. I think Brian's scared because he's young. All he has to do is call the state fire marshal, and he'll come in here and help him, guide him right through the paperwork. Many years ago, many years ago, I had him in for Big Betties. I was scared to death. And then, Mr. Myers came down here, he went over there and looked at, let's go to your Slistner's office, we went to the Slistner's office, he wrote all the paperwork up, and I signed it, and we tore it down. But there's some teeth right there. The state fire marshal will help him, and we'll get it done. That's, that's as simple as that. And there's a man in this area that just takes care of our area, all you got to do is call him.
Mayor, may I add, I did run into a state fire marshal two weeks ago or so. He was downtown, and I had him walk over to that portion of the bowling alley that was down, and his advice was to have the fire chief get ahold of him.
Okay.
Okay.
That's done then.
Do it. Okay. Anything else on the rest of the report? Okay, report of other village officials, members listening, you have any?
I'm attending a seminar this week on the use of opioid use in Mahoning County, and then I need a brief executive session regarding potential litigation before we adjourn the night. We'll pay our action.
Okay. Okay, from the mayor's office. We had our shred day Saturday, and our clerk has given us a report. Shredding company come with one, with a truck and one employee that drive at 10 o'clock, and used the alley out here, and the service department restricted flow in here, so they had to come in from off of 15th Street, and go back out 15th Street, work 30, work excellent late. They had 36 residents and two businesses come in, and we watched the, the stuff actually being shredded, and they dumped it all in, in big hoppers, and the paper that come out was about half an inch by an inch, and that was it. If anybody could put any of that together, good luck, because we mixed, by the time the stuff was put into the barrels that they could dump, out of boxes and stuff, we mixed everything together.
Isn't that machine awesome?
That machine was awesome, buddy. That machine was awesome, and we had a lot of help too. Mr. Flowers was here, I was here. I wasn't here very long, I was only here for about an hour. I made a mistake of bringing my golf cart down, got caught in the rain. But we had two or three service department, and two or three of the office clerk, and chief was here, and head dispatcher was here to watch their records being destroyed. So, it was a very successful day. Now, a touchy subject I'm going to bring up here. About two months ago, this council, by motion, authorized the manager to let the fire department use the mower and stuff on some property that the fire department owns, but not the village owns. Well, they needed some help with a roller, and they used a roller. The manager has felt that he should bill him for it. I don't think that was the desire of council when they made that motion. I would like council to either exclude this bill of $31.70 for the fire department, or in next meeting, have a resolution drawn up directing the manager on how he should handle that issue. So, he has it in writing. But for now, either we're going to do it, or I'm going to pay it. This Fire Department Association is not going to pay this bill, I can guarantee it. Now, what do you want to do? I've nothing to do with it. Okay, I'll take care of it.
No, no, I think we should just exclude the bill.
I was just, just about to speak up on that. Just, just put it on the back.
Yeah, unfortunately, the circumstances that surround it, the gentleman here that caused that, I think that bill to be generated isn't here tonight, and I think in haste, we do utilize, or the fire department and their association utilizes the lot in between the Circle K and the fire station, of which they have for a good many, many, many years now.
Right, at no cost.
But, at no cost, but unfortunately, one year, Mr. Kennel was chastised for allowing, or permitting the roller to be used there by one of, one of the fire department members, by a council member, and I think he has since brought that to everybody else's radar, and I think it should just be absolved. I mean, we have to work with the association and the department, and I just, I don't, I don't, like, if, if they don't, council doesn't want to absolve it, Mayor, I'll-